This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, I've got 7:05, so at this time I will open the August 17th Southampton Planning Board meeting. And all members are in attendance except for Cindy Palmer. She may join us eventually, but if not, we have a quorum to proceed. You also have with us Joy Piper, the Select Board liaison to the Planning Board. And we have Mark Reed here who is going to present the first agenda item tonight. It's an application by Christine Canton of 94 East Street, but the property address is 116 to 122 East Street, looking to create three lots. I have received a check for $250 for the fee. And it's been recorded at the town clerk's office. So at this time I'll hand over the presentation to Mark Reed.
Okay, thank you. For the record, Chris and Kevin Canton are with us tonight also. I can share my screen. No, that's not the right one. So so the Canton's own a 20.3 acre parcel of land located just easterly of Whispering Meadow Lane, and why didn't the plan come up? In just the application?
Mine came in a different file, Mark. There you go.
Got it? There you go.
Okay, there you go.
Alrighty, so Whispering Meadow Lane, which is a cul-de-sac that is off of East Street. East Street going towards the foot of the hill and going up towards just as Apple Orchard at the top of the hill. So what they would like to do is create three new building lots. Lot one has an area of one acre. We're in the RN zoning, so it requires 140 feet of frontage and 40,000 square feet. So lot one has 150.54 feet of frontage. Lot two is a large parcel of land that contains 18 acres. And within that area, we're proposing to develop, when they get buyers for the lots, a common driveway to service the three lots. And that that has 141.4 feet of frontage. And then parcel three or lot three is 1.3 acres and it has 201.4 foot of frontage. There is a perennial stream that is on the opposite side of East Street, which under the Wetlands Protection Act, there is a 200 foot riverfront area, which affects the front portion of the property. That's why we're proposing to do a common driveway to minimize any impacts within that riverfront area. So that there'd be one driveway coming in, going off to lot one, to lot three, and then continuing up the hill. Once you get past this point, it won't be a common driveway on lot two.
Just the board's information, Mark, that should this common driveway come to fruition, it has to be applied for by a special permit by this board, correct?
Correct. So a further application would be made to the Planning Board with the design and meeting the criterias of a common driveway under your bylaw for your approval.
And again, the common driveway bylaw can accommodate up to four lots, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Right. Any other information, Mark?
Yeah, you know, lots have been perked. The perk test locations are these little circles on the lots, so they have been perked. Witnessed by the town or the health agent. But with that, I don't have anything else really.
Questions from the board?
I guess at this point in time, you're just asking for permission to create these lots, right? You're not asking for permission to clear them or
No.
on them. Yep.
Correct. So so if you're driving by this, the front portion of this property, which basically encompasses lot one and three, and this portion of lot two is a mowed hayfield. Once you get further back in a lot, there's a there's a smaller hayfield here or meadow, and the rest of this area is wooded.
Right.
So the intent, the intent would be to, and we would have to file with the Conservation Commission, Dan. So the intent would to is put it on the market so that the Cantons can get buyers for the parcels. And then those people would work with further permitting to build the house.
And again, the common driveway, as you mentioned, is to minimize the impact of any runoff going into East Street and thus from the wetlands across the street.
Correct. Right. Under the Wetlands Protection Act and the riverfront section of the wetlands, you have to minimize any impact within the riverfront area. So that really to put the driveway in, it's all it's all a meadow or hayfield now. There's no trees to be cut. Just grading and construction of the driveway itself. There's plenty of site visibility, looking both east and west. Because you're on the outside of that curve, so there's no issue with visibility.
The common driveway area doesn't look to me like it's going to trigger stormwater. Am I not correct in that?
Yeah, we're not sure. I think depending on who buys lot two, you know, the building site would be back here. So that's the only lot that would might trigger stormwater permit. I don't believe that lot one or three will. But again, we don't, they don't have a house footprint or, you know, what people would like to do with their property, but I don't think there'd be a stormwater permit for lot one and three. Could be on lot two.
Yeah, because wouldn't the common driveway be the cumulative effect of whatever is done for building on lot two?
Yes, yeah, it would be included in that. Yes, you're right, Paul.
Right.
And if, you know, the perk tests are back here, so if they decide, you know, this is really the natural spot to put the house. It's very pretty back here, higher terrain. So it may trip your bylaw for stormwater management application.
Any other questions from the board?
So we're not approving the driveway at this point because that's another application. So it's just the lots.
Strictly A and R.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I just, I guess I have a question with regards to the driveway plan. Is this something you plan to deed into the lots that they could just have a driveway? A common driveway, or is this is just something you'd have to work out with people who potentially bought the lots later?
Yeah, it would be written into the deeds for a common driveway under your bylaw. So that there is provisions within that common driveway bylaw. And there would be a deeded rights for a common driveway shared by the three entities that own the property for maintenance.
Okay, so all three properties will have that language in the deed referencing a common driveway.
And for all intents and purposes, Mark, that's that's going to remain a private drive when that happens.
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have.
Paul?
Yeah, just, so this is the time that you would establish the easement in the A and R.
Correct.
Mark?
Yeah, so there's two ways of doing it, Paul. One is that, and I think it's more prudent to do it this way, is to establish the easement area. And then it is recorded with the town and the deeds and conveyances to the property. Sometimes you'll see where we would just go in and not show any common driveway or easements on it. And then subsequently do another plan showing easements. It just means another recording of an easement document and plan. This way, you know, you have one document or one plan that gets recorded to refer to. I think it makes it easier. Trying to search it in the future title wise.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to make sure that that we could do that at this time. So that's good. Okay. And just, you know, you mentioned a lot of stuff about storm, excuse me, about the riverfront and site this and everything else. I mean, that's something that will be further evaluated and further discussed at a later date. I mean, right now, this is an A and R only for the for the division of the subdivision of this parcel, so.
Correct.
Mark, could there be a scenario, I'm just trying to pick my curiosity, could there be a scenario where the property, people that buy the property decide they don't want a common driveway? So with the common driveway area still having the same 141 frontage, they could essentially all have their own driveways, correct?
If they could meet the performance standards of the Wetlands Protection Act.
Right.
And that's going to be problematic, I guess is a good word to use.
Okay.
Again, yeah, it's, it's, it's not it would be an issue with Conservation Commission to try to do three driveways.
Okay, all right, gotcha. All right, if there are no any other questions before I ask for a motion? Hearing none, do I have someone on the board that would like to make the motion to accept the A and R as proposed by Mark for the Cantons on East Street?
Like to make a motion to endorse the A and R for the three parcels on East Street?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Paul and seconded by Sarah. All in favor, Paul?
Paul, aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. 400. So that's passed. Now, second question, are you looking for street numbers on this?
Correct. So we will need street numbers for it, Paul. You know, you mentioned that the range that we have.
Well, you've got it listed as 116 to 122, so is that?
So that's the assessor's map, current assessor, the older assessors' maps that show house numbers. That's what they list on them?
Yep. What would you, what do you want to propose?
You know, we only have one lot, so I mean, I honestly don't know how the numbering system goes. Actually, I do know that because Kristen Kevin live at 94, so they increase as you go east. So I guess we could do lot one is 116. Lot two is 118. And lot three is 120.
Okay, so 116, 118, and 120.
And then there'll be an extra number in there.
All right. Very good, because I have this form now. I have to fill out for the assessor's office that we have for street assignment, so.
Okay.
Very good. Other than that, anything else, Mark?
No, we're good.
All right, thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Canton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with your development.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care all.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
You want to stop your screen share, Mark?
There you go. There you go, yep. Good night.
Good night. All right, next on the agenda, it wasn't published, but I had some things come in in the meantime, odds and ends. I sent you a letter from Francine Tishman, the Select Board, regarding a question on one of the E code chapters that wasn't under zoning, it was under a different chapter. But it has to do with stormwater and I don't know if you folks got a chance to read it. Let me see if I can bring that up here. Okay, can everybody see that? Yes, no?
No.
No. No, don't know what I did with it. I got it there, but why can't I show it?
You did something.
There we go.
Can you see it now?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't ask me what I did. All right, 227D is what Francine was referring to. So this section deals with some sort of fine.
So what's the question?
So they want to know that let's see, the E code people are asking the question that the town of Southampton may elect to utilize the noncriminal disposition procedure set forth in Chapter 203, noncriminal disposition of the general bylaw. The enforcing person and penalty shall be as provided in Chapter 203, noncriminal disposition. Each day or part thereof that such violation occurs or continues shall constitute a separate offense. So I guess they're asking if that it'd be put in a different section and if we, because we're the so-called in this new stormwater bylaw that was passed a couple of years back now, that they want to know if it's all right for us to move it back to a different section.
I feel like it already, I feel like it already is in another section of the stormwater bylaw with where we talk about fines, and I think it has different amounts. So it would make sense to at least search to ensure we're not, we don't have duplicate and different information in two different places.
I don't have, I don't really have a feeling out of one way or the other, to be honest with you. I don't know if they want to show it in two different sections, fine, but.
Paul, can you expand that where the plus sign is next to the green right there? So I think there's, there's further explanation here.
All right, okay, so maybe down here is better, down where I have my cursor is where the E code people are suggesting it go. Town of Southampton may elect to utilize noncriminal disposition set forth, Chapter 203. Enforcing person penalty shall be as provided in Chapter 203, noncriminal disposition each day or part of. So they're picking one from the list, either revise as suggested or revise as follows, but I don't I don't really have a strong opinion on it either way. But they want to do it as suggested? That's what I can check off.
And the only part I remember is it was a flat fine of $300 a day. We didn't have a graduated step.
I don't even, I don't even recall, to be honest with you, setting a fee for that. We're not, we're not typically, to my knowledge, we've ever set fees for this. So I don't know where the money came from unless that was part of the the stormwater thing from way back. I don't recall it though.
Let's look it up. Do we have a copy of that?
About the stormwater?
Yeah.
No, I don't have it handy where I could pull it up right now. I did, I did send you folks that out of the that was passed the town warrant, because for some reason or other, Mark Reed brought it to our attention. Because he's got a project coming up in October that'll require stormwater. And he couldn't find, he couldn't find on the website the stormwater bylaw, so we had to Cindy Palmer did me a favor and was checking with Lucy, and we found where it was adopted, but it had never been it had never been pulled in and put on the website and replaced the existing one with it. So that's why I sent it to everyone. But the main reason they they shipped this over to us is because the wording in the stormwater bylaw says that we're the we're the enforcing agency, which I have a problem with to begin with, but that's neither here nor there.
I was gonna say, how can we do that? Like, how are we enforcing this?
That's what I mean, you know.
It's to the building inspector.
I would
Through the belly inspector?
I would hope so, because I hope that's not another hat they want this board to wear.
I mean, I'm okay with the suggestions.
Do you have any opinion either way on it, Sarah?
I don't see any issue with it. I think it's fine.
Would you happen to find anything, Dan?
I'm digging around in emails, trying to see if I can find it. It's hard. I think I found the email, but this from where Richard Harris had done some markups to it. Trying to see if he'd mentioned, but all separate, every page is like a separate file. Oh yeah, here we go. I found it. What is this section? Violations, the zoning enforcement officers shall serve by certified mail. A notice of violation and order. Let me, I'm in section three. I hope I'm in the right section. Let me, can I share my screen?
Go ahead.
Okay. I need a permission, it says. Oh, it says you cannot start your, you cannot start screen share while another participant is sharing, so you would have to stop your screen share for a moment.
Got you.
Okay, let's try it now. Oh, it seems like it's gonna work. Okay, the screen here. Can y'all see it?
Yep.
So violations, the section D. I guess this is about removal of soil and home. May not be the stormwater one. I'd have to search. I don't want to waste people's time. So I guess I will go with, I have no opinion about this at this time.
Okay, Dan, you want to stop sharing?
Yes, one moment.
So everybody now in agreement that will take the revised version of E code suggested? Paul, you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's check off. Okay. Now, let's see if I can get this thing back. All right, thank you. Sorry for the runaround on that. Next on the agenda, again, nothing posted, but Dan requested that we just have another brief discussion pickup where we left off last time on sidewalks. There's been, I had forwarded some information and Paul did too about some grant monies that were being doled out in Hampshire County to different towns, and we weren't one of them, but it's also kind of have to apply for these things. So Dan, why don't you start off with some of your thoughts around that?
Yeah, let's start with, with, with the subject you just brought up, right? Like, how do we go about getting similar grants? And how do we, how do we, where would we want to apply those? If we could get them, might be something for people to think about.
So we, in order for us to act as in order for us to act in behalf of the town, we need to get the Select Board approval, buy-in to go and request funds on behalf of the town, particularly if it has to do with the Mass DOT Complete Streets, which is probably the most low hanging fruit that's out there for these funds to be that's out there for these funds to be, um, requested. The issue is, and I, and I heard, and I reached out to, to Chris about this before and she told me that they looked at complete streets a few years ago and there was no, and I forget the exact word, you know, something like there wasn't a whole lot of interest in adopting those, um, standards as part of the, the town's approach on future projects. And the hesitation that I think they might have is they don't want the state to dictate what standards we want to implement for our roadway facility features. And I understand that, but there is a lot of wiggle room with accepting those standards in terms of, you know, it does, we have usually the way it's written and the way a lot of communities have about doing so. You would basically develop a, um, policy, the tier one that says that, you know, we're gonna look at it and, and make these considerations for improvements or acceptance of roadways that we're gonna have in the future as part of our, uh, processes, which is what you would do under the level one. We're not, we're not there yet. So that policy would need to be able to be accepted by a select board.
That part kind of confuses me a little bit, like why the select board has that responsibility? When it seems like that really has to do with planning of the town, right? So.
Planning board, we, we don't have any right when it comes to that, really. The select board is, is the agent. We, we don't have a mayor that would sign off. There are, they're our, uh, legal entity, governing body that it gets, sets policy or sets, um, agreements with the state. So we don't have that power. We're, we're, we're nobody when it, when you, when you think about that in that context. So.
So to move forward, then we have to get permission from the select board. That would be the next step.
Right. We would have to basically say, look, we have, we want to establish a priority list of improvements that we want to, uh, pursue through the mass DOT complete streets. In order for us to get that funding, we need to adopt a complete streets policy.
Is that gonna just take a vote by this board and a letter to the select board? Or does it have to be outlined in particular? Some, some work on that?
Yeah, it has to be outlined and that's something that I could, you know, work with, the town or develop this list. I mean, the list, and I think I showed the example a couple of weeks ago, what I did recently, not recently, but a few years ago with, um, the city of Fitchburg, when, when, when that was established, so we, the city, so to just reiterate, the very first step, the city, the, the community, the municipality needs to develop a acceptance to a complete streets policy that has to be, um, executed by the select board. So we need them to first agree to this level one, um, agreement. So.
Uh, yeah, I guess my question, sorry, I, my, I'm taking notes. I'm confused about what is the first step, like it sounds like chicken and the egg a little bit. So what, so, um, is the select board, like do I, do we present to the select board? I mean, I'm all for this. I, you, you have a yes vote for me on this.
Yes, yes.
Um, do we, I'm sure the rest of the board is, but are we just presenting, hey, mass DOT has this program? We would like to come up with a priority list of the streets to focus on. Can we get, you, do you need a formal motion? Do you need a letter? I mean, what?
Yeah. So, so first thing is we need to paint a story, right? What, what we want. And obviously I think you explained that well in your, in your, in your question and, and statement there. Yes, we need to basically say, look, there, there's opportunities for us to get some state funding for complete streets improvements, right? Up to, I think it's $400,000 a year, which is a good amount of, uh, work. However, in order for us to, um, get there, we need to go through basically three tiers, right? Right now, we, we haven't developed, um, we haven't completed tier one, which is the, um, acceptance of a complete streets policy, um, that communities that are adjacent to us, like West, actually I think, uh, um, more so, uh, East, East Hampton, North Hampton, other communities have adopted these, these policies and they're receiving these funds on a regular basis, as, as what was shared before, uh, in the email. So we need that acceptance first, tier one level, in order for us to be considered, um, to get anything. So in, once we have established that tier one, we need to get to a tier two. The tier two is a prioritization plan, right? Prioritization plan, basically, uh, if you remember what I shared on my screen, a couple of weeks ago, it was basically an Excel sheet, right? That identified a list of priority locations the town would like to create projects of. Either it could be a mixed bag, it could be, you know, additional pedestrian crossing signage at, on East Street or, or wherever, right? Uh, or sidewalk from, you know, on, on Fulmer, from Route 10 to, to High Street or whatever we wanted to identify and assign on a priority and a cost and, um, our, uh, overall demand or what we're requesting for from, uh, from the state. Uh, and that would have to be accepted by the select board as well. So that could be sent off. And once that's set, uh, sent off to the state, um, we can get to a level three, uh, tier three, um, which at that point, you know, it's an award and implementation of that particular, uh, prioritization plan, uh, depending on, you know, fun, funds.
Did you happen to see the list I forwarded from Randall some time ago? Um, it's in your emails. But here's, I asked him this back in January, actually, we had this conversation when it first arose. Um, but he sent a graph of five, six areas, by the way, that his department recommends for priorities and it's Route 10. Extend the existing sidewalk northerly, northerly from Park Place. Connecting to Town Hall to Poo's Big Y and Red Rock Plaza in the pharmacy and very close to the southernly end of Man Hand Rail Trail. So that's like 1.5 miles.
Can I just, hold on, hold on, can I just interrupt you on that one? So I don't believe we could use that location because that's state highway. I think this goes into city jurisdiction. So if Randall wants to have a sidewalk project in Route 10, or if the town wants to have a project in Route 10, we have to go through a tip process. So we need to prepare a, submit a, um, project information or project initiation, um, form with mass DOT that gets reviewed by the committee that the state has. And we would then be awarded the project and then we would have to, um, basically wait a few years to get that funded, uh, through the local regional, uh, tran- transportation improvement, um, fund or project fund that, that's in this district here or, or our Springfield NPO or the Metropolitan Planning Organization that we're part of. So long story short, that's, that's a much longer process and that usually takes like four to five years to get that. And you gotta go through serious documentation and getting engineered plans and mass DOT review, um, if you're doing stuff on the state highway anyhow.
Well, that was, that was the first one is the second was Palmeri Meadow Road extending sidewalk from Glendale intersection down to Meadow Lane, which, um, would then extend it, that would go then from, um, beginning of Palmeri Meadow Road all the way down to Meadow Lane by, uh, Norris School. There's another one around the Route 10 area, Town Hall to High Street. They just did in front of the cemetery, which is from High Street to Palmeri. So that was done, but there's that, as you know, that kind of like walking path, would that be considered state highway too, Paul?
No, the only state highway on the town, um, is basically Route 10. So, so basic, basically all of Route 10 in the town is state highway.
Okay. Another smaller project, uh, Gun Road, Gun Road extension between Palmeri Meadow Road and Route 10. That picks up Greenbrier Apartments and connects to Norris School.
So, so if I'm, if I'm, I'm sorry, if I may interrupt, uh, the school, so not gonna disclose any client names, but one of my clients inquired about a safe routes to school program that's also out there, um, that we could also apply for. And the safe routes to school program, um, works similar to the tip projects or, or the complete streets, but, um, we still have to go through the review process. So the town can submit an application to the state for the safe route to school. Um, so if you're in the vicinity of school and if you can document that it would be utilized, you would promote more pedestrian, uh, foot traffic or school traffic, uh, school, school, I have a hard time talking tonight. The school, uh, students would be utilizing a shared use path, either by bicycles or by walking. If you can document that, um, that's something that usually gets awarded. Um, so that's an opportunity there. That, that's another funding source that can be utilized for areas near the school.
Good. So it sounds like there's two or three different avenues at least to take about some of these projects, right?
Exactly. Just a matter of town support.
So I'm looking at the mass DOT complete streets funding program, a guide to getting started. So it says like the first thing to do is assign a complete streets rep and then making account, et cetera, et cetera. I'm gonna send, I mean, the first one is educate the municipal and transportation professionals on complete streets. There's a bunch of steps and everything. So I'm gonna actually send this, you know, to the select board with your guys' blessing and ask for it to be put on as an agenda item, as a project that we can endorse and commence going forward with as a town. Um, what I also did want to mention, I know Paul, you're talking about, um, the list that Randall provided, but it did state somewhere, oh, in tier two, that municipalities, um, I mean, mass DOT will provide up to $38,000 for technical assistance to assist in the development of a prioritization plan if needed. So I just wanna, you know, I know there's, town's always changing and I don't know how old that list is, but that there, it seems to also provide funding to help the town with coming up with that list.
That's great.
So if you guys are okay with me forwarding this over to the board and just, you know, really kind of moving this forward, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I would keep Randall in the loop on some of this too, for some of his, uh, feedback.
Absolutely. I'm, if you're okay with it, I might CC him on, I'll CC the planning board and the highway department.
Sure.
Yeah. So that priority list is, is referenced, that's the tier two as, as referenced on their website. So that's the priority that we would, we would establish with that $38,000 technical assistance.
So are, I guess, are what we asking from, as the planning board is for approval from the select board to apply for the tier one level complete streets program?
No, I think, isn't it just to get their feedback from it and before we submit any kind of formal letter?
Okay.
Is that where this is going, Paul, you think, or?
Well, I, I was just jumping into the next step. I mean, we, we should just say flat out, we're looking to go and apply.
Yeah, I like that idea better. I mean, why, why dance around it? Let's, let's make the select board make a decision.
Yeah, if they have any concerns and want to discuss it further, we definitely can. You know, we can even say if you'd like to have more of a discussion, but we think we should proceed with it.
And, and Joey, one thing to just bring up, um, you're gonna hear this from town folks. Maybe someone, or I don't know, to be honest, I don't know if they were gonna say this on the select board, but this was something that was mentioned before is, you know, you know, we're, we're a town, we don't want to be held to state standards when it comes to what we do for sidewalks, what we do for roadway configurations and what we do, um, for sidewalk facilities or shared use facilities, you know? That's actually a feeling shared by many communities across the state, but the acceptance of the tier one letter or our policy, which is the tier one, the policy can be written in a manner that is, that gives us some flexibility when it comes to what we want to implement. So it doesn't lock us into a particular cross section of a roadway width with a shared use path and, you know, bike lanes everywhere per se.
Yeah. I mean, the way they put it in this, um, document, it says the municipality itself and the community develops its, you know, policy, I think that gives it enough ownership that if anyone's arguing, you know, state standards, also I think it's just really a safety issue. Like our streets aren't, aren't that safe in town? And so I think that something with the increase of population, this is something that just is, needs to be done. Um, so.
I, I agree with you. I'm just letting you know what's gonna be said based on hearing this at multiple communities, you know, in multiple communities and, you know, talking to other officials in other towns, you know?
Yeah. I, I mean, the biggest thing to me is like, why not try and make our town better if they're gonna give us the money to do it? I mean.
Agreed.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I think the bottom line though, for all of us, the main theme was, um, just reading the publicity time and time again, over the years about communities getting money for, to help their communities. And then we're just, we're just not that proactive. I suppose we have been in recent years since Chris Bowles and some of the other people helping her. But, um, should emphasize it more, if it's out there, we, we would like to have our share.
Absolutely. So, you know, does someone want to make a motion that we, uh, uh, approach the select board with this?
I'll second that.
Well, I thought Paul, Paul forgot since it's here's his idea, he would like the honor of making the motion.
How can, how can he when you just did?
No, no, I said, would someone like to?
Well, Paul did, did, no, did, well, whatever, it's fine.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. Paul second it, right?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
In favor of Paul, yes?
Paul, I.
Sarah?
Hi.
Dan?
I.
Myself, I, 400.
I just want to be clear about what I'm, I'm asking the select board to make a motion and approve us for this step. It says a municipality represents, attends a free and mass DOT complete series and becomes the representative to complete streets and the community develops and passes a complete streets policy. Are we looking for a motion for, um, the select board to, um, just approve the planning board as a whole, moving forward with this project and coming back to you guys and having you guys really spearhead it? Or are you looking for a motion for the board to also appoint a representative to be the person going to these trainings and helping develop the, the complete streets policy?
I, if, if I may speak, um, I think the first, the first step or the, there's two ways of looking at this. The select board can. The select board can designate us as a, um, as a town entity that would review, um, the development of a complete street policy, the tier one level that we can present to the select board, uh, for them to approve.
Okay.
And then, um, the trigger for this would be the ability, you know, for, the reason why we're doing this is to ultimately, um, request funds on behalf of the town for, uh, more, let's, for improvements that would be developed or summarized in a, um, prioritization list. And the prioritization list would be publicly, um, would be publicly, uh, advertised and, and discussed, meaning we would have a hearing, um, to, to basically identify our take or, um, not so much our take, but the town's take on a preferred priority list of, of these improvements that we would want to submit to the, um, state for funding request. So there's a lot of stuff that we've kind of jumped over, i.e. if we get technical assistance from the state, meaning getting that $38,000, would we be the ones that would be, um, I, I guess that's, that's a good thing, that's a, that's a good thing to have as a, as a issue come up before, that someone's got a select consultant or technical assistants to develop that list, um, which is, which is, which is great if we can get that money, because it takes the burden off the town to develop this list themselves. So I guess the very first step would be to establish a complete street policy, which is the, the tier one, policy establishment.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Paul, for your input on that. Thank you, Joy, for presenting that for us.
Sure.
Enjoy, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If the board, if the select board wants someone to talk about it, I'm more than happy to, to present or talk about it if there are any questions, um, based on my past experience.
Okay, I'll let them know, that's helpful, thank you. I mean, it might be one of those things where like, yeah, go for it, or they might be like, no, we want some more information before we give you the, so, I'll let them know.
Committee reports, is there anything from your end, Sarah?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute, um, no, I don't have anything. I guess the only thing is, um, Dan, you forwarded me a couple PVPC emails. Do we need to do anything, um, to trans, is that all transferred? I haven't really done much with it, to be honest, this month, I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, Paul, Paul, demon, I, the decision might have happened while you were away. Might have been a meeting that Paul Forgot was running, uh, the reelection of, uh, who's representing us at the PVPC. Uh, and, uh, Sarah was, was kind enough to, is interested in that. So, uh, we wanted to transition that to her. Do you know, do we have to send the organization information to make that transition or?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Right, that sounds good, thank you.
And when I've done on that, Sarah, um, typically in the past, you'll get the agenda, uh, down the road and if it's, if things are pertinent, you can weigh in on it. You know, most of the stuff is not relative to much of anything we do, but every now and again, something comes along that might be of interest, but that's what, view the agenda beforehand and don't think that you're, you're locked into attending every session.
Okay, all right, that sounds good, and so I'll get those, um, agendas, just via email and a meeting notice or whatever.
Yeah, they'll probably, um, they used to follow up with mailings. I don't know if they do it anymore, but what's your mailing address?
Uh, nine Cold Spring Road.
All right. Very good. Nothing from your end of it, Dan, any committees you're on?
Uh, nothing added this time.
Therefore, nothing else until September, um, we have a meeting on September sixth, is it?
Seventh, I think it's the last day.
Yeah, the seventh. I don't know what will be going on then, Richard's on vacation this week. I spoke to the E-code lady today. Um, Richard sent her all the chapters we had worked on and she had questions, uh, about how, what she wanted us, what she wanted her to do with them. And they said, well, naturally we want you to incorporate them into the, uh, the E-code that you're doing and, uh, she's gonna check with Richard too, but I'm relatively sure he's sending her all those so they can be presented in May. We still have other stuff to work on, but, um, she was unclear, because, um, it may trigger some extra expense, because, uh, that wasn't in the original E-code contract with the town, from what I understood from her, so she is going to send a quote on what it is going to take to, um, incorporate all those pages into the, uh, chapters she has, um, since we've already covered them. But, uh, I told her to touch base with Richard just to, uh, confirm that that's what his intent was, because we covered the several chapters and I'm sure that he wants to see, naturally, you understand, we have to, uh, go to public hearing, uh, with these before they go to the warrant anyway, but I'm reasonably sure he wants to get those, uh, on the docket for the, uh, May town meeting. But he'll, uh, update us on that probably next meeting. And then the 21st is the first meeting, which will be a joint meeting with housing, uh, listening to the report from Ken Comia on what he has, uh, developed thus far, for affordable housing options, changing zoning and, and what have you. So that should be an interesting meeting. I don't hear from anyone else with any other business to, uh, or communications, I'll ask to for an adjournment.
Like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, folks, have a good week, thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Night.
Take care and be well.